Do something to either adjust that one, it seemed a little crazy.
Oh, okay. I tried to make it simple and then I thought maybe, because I think what I did for Mark when he had to do it last year is I wrote it up in journal entry form for him. And when I said to the break, she was like, oh, I hope that you shouldn't need me to write it up in a formal format, but I think if I explain it to you, you'll be able to do it. But if not, I can type in a form entry to read it, so make it easier.
Morning.
Good morning.
Who do we have?
Jenny Pachano.
Morning Jenny.
Morning.
Michael Vatia.
Morning. Morning.
I went like this to move my leg back when you walked by, so my leg kicked in. I mean, I got punched.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Good morning. We ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we go into meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we thank you for this beautiful morning that you have granted us. We thank you for the recent rain that we needed to offset our drought. May it nourish the creation and have it flourish. Father, this Sunday we'll celebrate Grandparents' Day. We thank you for the wisdom, love, and pass that they have shared with their children and now their children's children. Children are treasures of our life, and to have grandchildren is an additional blessing. Provide them good health so they can enjoy their families in their twilight years. And Lord, as we remember the beauty of family that you've created, this Sunday we'll also remember the innocence and security that was ripped from our nation and changed it forever. And it's sent men and women, ordered flights, and went to work, never to return home to their families. Firefighters, EMTs, and police officers started their shifts as a normal day that turned into a nightmare. Lives full of beauty, sacrifice, and promise gone in a blink of an eye. We remember the final calls and messages left by loved ones, husbands, wives, sons, and daughters, saying, "I love you and I will see you someday." On that day, evil did not care about a person's nationality, wealth, sex, or religion. But God, you sent the ones that focused on humanity, love, and people in need. Many sacrificed and lost their lives for the love of their brothers and sisters. The true soul of a nation and humanity was revealed in its open hearts. We thank you that evil did not prevail as we stood as a nation. We pray that you will continue to comfort those families that lost loved ones. Let us honor their memories by seeing the value of life. Keep us free of bitterness and hatred, as it will tear and eat the soul of one's foundation. We are one nation you have united. You have richly blessed our great land for two and a half centuries. However, we see the same hate that was displayed on that fateful morning 21 years ago still evident today. We pray for your love and wisdom to flow throughout our land. Do not allow us to self-destruct from the same hate that caused such loss and heartbreaking on that morning. Father, we were faced with many challenges, but we know you had the blueprints. We know that if we follow your guidance, you will lead us on the right path. As we look to our parents and grandparents for that wisdom and guidance, may we look to you first for the divine wisdom and guidance as you have made us, and know what is best for us, as you are our eternal Father. So on this September day, we ask you to do these things in accordance with your will. Amen.
At this time, we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting and ask for the approval of amendments to the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
All right, public comments. Public comment on agenda items only at this time. Okay, hearing none. We move on to reports. Brady? Yes, we have one thing we have to change here. We have additional changes to agenda not previously posted. Director?
Commissioners, we're going to remove action item 8.2, Resolution 2022-16, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250 PA.
I'll move to amend the agenda and remove the item.
Second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
So remove this time? Okay.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification are the invoices due through September 14th, 2022, that were paid on, well, that should be 9/7/2022 today in the amount of $1,414,735.70. The breakdown is $803,259.63 is the general fund, or approximately 57%. $153,433.18, or approximately 11%, are grants and other sources. Pass-through items are approximately 25% or $353,037. RMS's share was $104,505.89, or approximately 7%. And a very small amount, $500, belongs to escrow funds this week. Did you have any questions this week?
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, prepared.
Moving on to personnel actions. Jessica?
Morning, Jess.
Good morning, Commissioners. For your approval, we have Madison Z., I'll say, for the Pre-Release Center, Resident Supervisor, Part-Time Replacement, starting at $1,595. Her position is not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, and we're anticipating her to start on September 12. For the prison, Dennis Lynn, a CO Relief Position, Full-Time Replacement, $18.10 an hour, anticipated to start on September 11. Nathan Bennett, CEO for the prison, Full-Time Replacement at $18.10. Regina Rooker for Facilities Management, she's transitioning from an internal position to the Operations Coordinator position, and her pay will be $19.28. Mara Person for M.D.J. Solomon's Office, a part three, Full-Time Replacement at $14.44 per hour. And Skylar Corbin, Telecommunicator Trainee, Full-Time Replacement, starting at $17.18 for the 911 Center.
Okay, can I have a motion for these personnel actions?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any questions or discussion? Or Jessica? Hearing done. All papers say aye?
Aye.
So carrying. This time we'll recess the Commissioners' Public Meeting and convene the salary board.
Looking for your approval for the prison, requesting ratification of the decision to provide market rate adjustments for the prison nursing staff, including the LPNs and RNs. All the active employees in this position will receive a $1.90 pay adjustment, and the starting salary for the positions are being increased by $1.90 per hour as well. The retro adjustment is back to June 1st of this year.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
One second. Yes, discussion?
Yes.
Wait for the second.
Sorry.
Second, discussion or questions? Come on up, please.
Thanks. I just wanted to reiterate something that I've said before, but this isn't about the decision for the LPNs. I understand the need, but it's not just one department that are having staffing issues. And we have a ton of employees pulling double duty because of lack of staffing, and this is something that needs to be not piecemealed any longer. We need to get it fixed across the board.
Thank you.
So, just to try to address that concern, there's no question that we do. What we are doing is we are trying to balance the fact that if we just raise all the wages, you know, 10% or whatever, we would end up having to raise taxes probably over a mil just to cover the increase. So what we're trying to balance is finding the ability to address the crises, like at the prison with the LPNs, where we literally cannot get LPNs because other facilities are paying substantially higher. We're trying to address each group. Now, the guards are in a collective bargaining agreement, so we can't make unilateral changes there, and we've been negotiating with the guards. When you say all the employees, are you talking about all the employees throughout the county, or?
Because the ones that have not yet been addressed. I mean, this is a tenure issue. I'm not disagreeing.
No, I know.
I understand everything you're saying, but I feel very strongly that this needs to be called attention to when we're making decisions for individual sectors within the county employees, and it affects those of us that aren't being reviewed yet, which I understand. But it's hard to get to keep, to attract qualified employees. I mean, I personally, in my office, lost a candidate due to the pay. So, and I mean, you look at the market rate, and it's $10,000 to $15,000 higher a year. So I understand the cost to the county has to be concerned, but if we hadn't kicked the can down the road 10 years ago, we may not be faced with this crisis currently. So I just would encourage that as quickly as possible, and in prior discussions, we've heard that there were going to be studies. I understand the studies are expensive, and you have to balance what you're laying out versus trying to keep people. I mean, I get all that. I'm not saying I don't understand, but I feel it needs to be called attention to when there's a decision on the table.
And so, just so you understand, part of, you know, we physically, meaning the HR Department, physically can only do so much at a time.
I understand.
Okay. No, no, I know, and I know you're not criticizing that you're, we just want you to understand the process that we're trying to utilize, so. Okay, but so I hear you.
Krista, I'll state, this has been a problem that's been going on for years, and there are certain segments, we can't compete with the private sector. The private sector passes the cost on to their customer.
And again, I think our retirement is a big offset. It's to salary, but
Let me finish.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
So, we can't pass a lot of this cost on to our consumer, which is a taxpayer. Commissioner Mayor Beal is right. If we raised everybody at 10%, you're looking at well over a mil in taxes. And I'm not here to raise taxes. I'm here to live within our means, provide a fair wage for people to live. Now, so we changed everything. We know that. We know that. And we're working diligently, trying to get this straightened out. We're working with like the bargaining unions, where you've worked with unions. Those things take time. There's a lot of opinions, rumors going around, and we're trying to tackle that. Our HR director's just about done with a compensation study, and we're going to look at that, and we're addressing this. We're not kicking it down the road any further. I guarantee you that. And we're definitely tackling this thing, and it will be tackled very shortly, because she's just about done with that. Then we have to make the hard decisions. We have to make the hard decisions on what gets compensated more in today's economy and one some aren't gone to. It's just the reality of it. And we just have to make those decisions. There are people working excessive overtime. We understand that. It's affecting their families. That eats at me every day, because I was an employee over there. I know what it's like to live those, okay? I enjoyed working for the county. I said a long time ago, you live comfortably. You don't get rich, but you live comfortably working for the county.
Well, you do the public service.
It's a public service.
I understand that.
And that's why you do it, basically, because you're giving back to the community and you're helping the community. And that's a great reward, knowing that you're helping people that are your neighbors.
I understand, but then we have the federal and the state government creating more of a situation that the expenses go up and the pay doesn't
Yeah, we get those, we get that all the time, and they push it down, and they don't provide the funds to go along with it, so they tell us to find the funds.
I would, I would hope that once this gets addressed fully, that we find a way to be consistent, because I think if we had been consistent over the past 10 years, this wouldn't be as big of an issue as it is now.
Yeah. And things turn upside down right now with wages all across the board, I mean, nationally. I mean, people are struggling to put groceries on the table, to take medicines, and to pay their own bills. And we've got to make sure that we assist everybody in the whole picture, because you have to live within what you have. It's just the reality of it. Thank you for coming.
The only, the only thing, I don't know what the labor point is, but I don't think anyone has kicked the can down the road 10 years. And the problem with saying, with thinking that is that it leads employees to think that for 10 years, they've been not fairly compensated. And we've tried to, within the confines of the financial constraints of all the issues that have been out there, the pandemic, the fact that people are aging in this community, and they are leaving the workforce, the fact that we are, as a county, losing population and losing workers, because we've gone from 120,000 to about 113,000. So that means the tax base is under stress also, and the tax base has seen more property go into the hands of nonprofits, which are not paying property taxes. So we have a shrinking tax base, a shrinking working pool, and a shrinking population. And so, we're trying to balance people who are out there living on fixed incomes or on very low incomes with maybe no retirement, with the fact that we can't just expect people to come to work and not be fairly compensated. So I, I mean, I've been here seven of the 10 years. I would hope that I haven't ignored it for seven years. If I have, somebody, feel free to tell me. I mean, I'm dead serious about that, because I don't want to. What we've tried to do is balance it. We got, you know, we went into the whole early intervention program, and they came back having us spend, you know, over a million dollars to do a compensation study, and it just wasn't tenable. That's, that's my only reaction.
I would respectfully disagree, because we stopped using the salary structure that existed with the intent of making changes, and nothing's happened. So that's why I say it's been ignored, and it's not a criticism, but when we got rid of that, it should have been addressed. And while it might not be this current Board of Commissioners, I'm saying this, again, not as a criticism, but it is a reality. We stopped using the structure in place and have not replaced it with anything viable.
And when you say the structure in place, you're referring to the step structure?
Correct.
Where each person was guaranteed us?
They weren't guaranteed.
Well, no, I mean, it was, 99% of the people got it because the evaluations never materialized.
But that goes back to a management issue, and you can't just throw something out the window and say, "We're going to fix it," and we had a 10 years go by and it's not fixed. And it's not you that said that.
Right, no. But what I'm trying to say is, from an economic point of view, 99% of the people were getting the step increase.
I understand.
Which was, which was 4% or?
It was four and a half.
Four and a half, yeah. So, anyway, we're trying to find a solution that fairly compensates people. One of the things that Jess is doing is she's trying to flag when market rate adjustments need to be done, separate from the whole compensation part, so that someone who was doing a job seven years ago that's radically changed gets compensated for the fact that they're taking on more responsibility, they're more efficient, they may be covering more than one position.
I understand.
And I will agree with one of your statements, is there's a lot of inconsistencies.
Right.
And that has to be addressed, because nothing will destruct a, a, any
Any organization.
Any structure, more than inconsistencies.
And I say we're not all equal.
I don't disagree.
You know, when I came in here, payroll was increasing at $1.1 million a year. If we didn't do something, it would be at $37 million today.
I understand.
We're at $27 million. When I look and, listen, my sole responsibility as a Commissioner is to make sure I protect taxpayers as much as possible, and to balance out what the needs of our people are. They're part of the team. They provide a service to our constituents. And many, many times, we sat here and made decisions based upon not only the need for our employees, but to justify their pay increases. And it could be one person, it could be two per, it could be a whole department, right? We've done what we tried, tried to do, but it seems like everybody is on an equal scale, and it just doesn't work in a management structure. There's, you know, the sheriff's departments has a huge responsibility. They go out. Yesterday was a great example. Somebody, somebody could have been shot, right? So that's a, that's a pretty stressful job. Crimine guards, stressful jobs. No, there's filing paperwork at times into the prosecutor's office, stressful jobs. We know everybody has the stress, but we have to balance that with the people that we represent, and that's the taxpayers. And when, I don't know about you, but when I go to a gas pump, you know, I'm blessed. Tax me more, I'm okay, right? But when I go to a gas pump and I see these people putting in $10, that gives me two and a half gallons worth of gas. That's the majority of our people. And then you see requests of 10, 15, 20% in pay increases. And, and then our benefits, you know, not everybody's young. Not everybody's young. Not everybody says, "I don't want my healthcare. I want, I want pay increases. I don't care about healthcare." The majority of the people down in this county realize that deductibles were high. We raised them, we're dropping them. A health center is a $3 million project that we hope to say we know what's going to save us money in the end. But not only that, it provides a much better service for our employees, that they can go to this center, and it seems nobody cares about that. Nobody cares about the expense that we're putting in. They just want more. To be frank, it's pretty frustrating. So, you know, we'll do what we can do and kick the can? Hell, no. We can't kick the can, Dr. O. Yes, I will agree. I wish there was another system in place that was real, reasonable and sustaining. Okay?
And I've been on both sides, and there has to be a balance. I get it, I get it. But he's right. We can't, we can't afford 10, 15%. Some of these requests coming in are absurd. They're absurd.
And some of our older employees that are ready to retire, right? I mean, again, right? Well, if we're moving them up because of market rate, and trust me, if I'm a guard at the prison, and I'm being forced overtime, and I can't get applicants, right? That's public safety. That's our job, right? That's public safety. And if I got to raise those rates to 20%, and, and then a manager says, "Well, I want the same thing," and they're in the 60s or $70,000 range, come on, cut us a break. We're, we're trying to solve two problems, retention and recruitment, but everybody wants the same.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't even know that his people are looking for the same, in my experience and conversations.
In our seat.
I understand that. I'm just saying that the equity of consideration and, and the looking to adjust across the board, because it does affect all of our employees.
I appreciate what you're saying. You're, you're, you had difficulty trying to find somebody, and hopefully we're going to be able to address that.
It's that way, it seems that way.
In the private sector as well.
Yeah.
It's horrible.
You can't find people that want to come to work these days, which you said. We're seeing this all the time. And if they want it, when they show up for work, it's for a short time, and it's turnovers, you know. I attended a seminar very early in 2022, the buzzword for retention. And that was, everybody's trying to figure out how to retain their employees, how to retain them. So it's government, it's private, it's everybody. So we'll continue to tackle this. It's a monster. It's the number one thing facing us right today is the labor force.
Biggest.
It's the biggest. It's as big as inflation, getting people in the door and keeping them there, and trying to keep them there so that they're happy and productive. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments or questions? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's three to one. We'll adjourn the salary boards this time, and we'll reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting.
TDA actions, Jessica?
Yes, approve the following TDA actions, the same as our salary board, requesting ratification of the decision to move the market rate adjustments for the prison nursing staff, RNs and LPNs, increasing all of the current staff by $1.90, and the starting rate by $1.90, and retroactivating this back to June 1st of this year.
I just, I'd just like to add that it is so critical that we had a meeting just two days ago. If there are no nurses at our hospital, at our prison, what do we do? Send them to the emergency room, and then have sheriff deputies, and now our APO officers can't, can't take that duty? What do we do? I mean, this is
And we're struggling, you know, even to find staffing, nursing staffing agencies to help support.
Yeah, they won't even, and they, and they would charge 70 bucks an hour.
Well, actually, we're looking at about 75 to 85 bucks an hour for an LPN to staff at the prison.
And they can't even come up with them.
And they can't even come up with them, correct.
And then what do we do? You know, do we look at a medical service provider like some of the other counties have, and that's astronomical?
Right.
And, but I talked to one of them. They don't have to staff.
Right.
I mean, this is critical, and especially, we have to address this in our prison. It is, what do we do? Let them out? The street? I don't think so.
It's important for the public to understand what was just said, that it may seem like we're raising a lot, right? A $1.90 brings our starting rate to what for LPNs?
$24.90.
Okay, $24.90. So, the director of HR went out and investigated what it would cost us to subcontract this out, and it's going to be 75 to 85 an hour.
And that's if we can find people.
Right. So the point is that, that's because the agency is getting a chunk of that.
Right.
Right? The agency's getting a chunk. They're providing the workers' comp. All of that, workers' comp and the other payments when there are employees are paid by us, but we still don't approach anywhere near that, even at 24 an hour. So
Right.
That's why we're doing this, so hopefully we can attract some LPNs. And, you know, And, you know, again, for people there, I hope that our employees feel like the county is a good place to work because the best salespeople for bringing employees here are the existing employees. And, you know, it may not be that every thing, no job is perfect, but hopefully between healthcare and vacation. You know, one of the things that we don't ever talk about, I tell people in the private sector about how many days our employees have off after they reach, how many years, Mr. Metzger, do they get, where they start to really?
I think it was twelve.
Five?
Well, twelve, you get the max, twelve years and it's basically twenty-nine days off.
So, so being twelve years, if, if you stay here twelve years, you're gonna wind up with almost a month of paid time off a year.
Plus you get your ten holidays.
Plus you get your ten holidays, so that's another ten days, so that's thirty-nine days.
Basically two months out of the year because you get twenty, twenty workdays a month.
I guarantee you in, in, in most private sector places, and, and I'm not begrudging it, I'm happy that people are getting the time off, but I just hope people will recognize that there's pluses and minuses to every job.
Yeah, and that was, that was a huge benefit, there's no doubt about it.
And that doesn't mean we don't have responsibility to continue to try to make ourselves competitive. We will and, and we are doing that.
We are working on it, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions on the salary board actions? Or, excuse me, the TDA actions?
No, I'm motioning.
I'll move to three.
Counselor? All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to informa, uh, information items, six point one, Maya. Acknowledge the county will be requesting bids for the new X-ray imaging system for the courthouse.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. So this is a request that's coming out of the sheriff's office to put out to bid. Ideally, I think he's here and he can talk a little bit more about it if he wants to, but the estimated total on this project, I believe, is forty-seven some thousand dollars. Twenty thousand is anticipated to be utilized by AOPC, however, we're still verifying that because I don't believe we've got a full commitment yet from them.
We, we, we attempted, I guess that give us a full commitment, but our, our past experiences are that the relationship we have with AOPC, it might allow that funding to be used for this project. And I say that because we wanted to shift that funding before we had, before we had, you know, the spectral issue. We weren't shifting, as you remember, to the MDJ offices, Salma and the Dieter office, but they wouldn't allow the funding. For some reason, would allow the funding to go to the MDJ offices, but said, and we asked the question, can we use it in courthouse? And naturally, we have a tentative yes, we would think you can do that. So that's why I believe we'll see that.
So I'd like to comment. This is a year of uncertainty. We have no clue where the union contracts will be at. We have no clue where non-union pay is gonna be at. It could be significant. And if there are capital projects that can be held off and, and at least for another year or two, we, we, we can't spend this money. We, we have a lot of capital, capital projects presented to us this year that earn millions. And we'd have to make some tough decisions. And we don't know where the pay and the salary wages are gonna be at. And I think sheriff, it can, if it can be held off, you know, I, I don't know, I haven't talked to you yet. I did wanna talk to you before next Wednesday. I would appreciate it if it was off the plate.
How, how much is this project?
So the, the total project estimated, again, we don't know until the bids come in, but for, when we got a quote, it was forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
And, and how much are we gonna get?
So we would be putting in that twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents. That's the county funds that we go towards it.
If we get the twenty.
If we get the twenty thousand AOPC funds.
Okay. So.
That would be a little more palatable.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, that, that's more palatable because we have an opportunity to pick up almost half the cost.
That's right, but that's not what was.
Well, no, that's depending on whether AOPC allows us to do it.
That's correct.
Also, we know about that.
I don't know. We've been talking about this for a good, at least, six months or more and we still haven't heard any feedback yet.
The last information we received was that DCA stall indicated that twenty thousand dollars would be shipped in the air mark for this project.
Perhaps maybe what we should do, if that's what the thought process here, as an alternative, perhaps we can wait till we get that confirmation and if, when it occurs, then go out the bid so that we're not essentially putting the cart before the horse and we're ensuring that we have those funding to reduce our costs overall from, you know, taxpayer money.
Was there a grant that we applied for, that you applied for with the city, with your buried equipment?
Oh, Edward Byrne?
Yeah, would that, would that be applicable?
Um.
Is that to equipment?
They changed it. So about three years ago, they became very tight on what they labeled as equipment and it had to meet new standards that they had. They revamped what, their terms and conditions. I don't know, I'd have to, we'd have to look at it, but I do know that that has since put out in April. And here's the problem, this is what we talked about earlier, with the allocations are based off of uniform reporting. Because the uniform reporting perhaps was not being done properly or there wasn't just enough records as a result of that, we were not giving a very big allocation. We're not getting an allocation like we used to. And I addressed that the past two years. So that's unfortunate because we're a disparate jurisdiction with the city. So they are essentially the applicant, but they have to share those monies with us. I don't know what the answer to that is, you know, but I mean, even if we were to even get that prior, when we were getting funds, we would get, you know, anywhere between ten and fifteen thousand. And those funds were always going to the prison for the equipment needs that they had needed to help offset our operational costs. And then it died off because of the, the reporting and then we were only looking, sometime, we started out at five and then we went to zero, five thousand.
That was the stats of the police report.
Yes.
We have a new chief of police over there, so maybe we should have him, maybe help him more, or something.
And I did that, yeah. So he is aware. So, and I guess it's just, you know, unfortunately, this funding round that came out just here is in April, was still under the, his predecessor. So we'll see, you know, I'm hopeful that come next spring, we'll have better, you know, results.
Have you? I have a clarification. The forty thousand, the twenty thousand was approved. I'm old, but I thought I was told that by Adrian. That's, that money is there. We have that money available to match this. That's when I, that's why I, I said that the MDJ officers weren't given that money that the county would receive. So twenty thousand is gonna be supplemented by AOPC funds that the county already had. Or that Adrian already had access to. Now, keep in mind, of the forty-seven thousand, of the forty-seven thousand, we get the number here. The maintenance, what's the maintenance?
The maintenance is, it's a five-year warranty with the PMI, so that's, I think, fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So if you, if you talk about the capital.
Five years.
The capital expense, you break out the maintenance, then the project actually is more than a, the maintenance app, the actual capital project is actually almost fifty-fifty. It's close to a fifty-fifty match with AOPC, right?
Yeah, I guess, you know, from my perspective, I've not seen that from a grant, grant side. So if there is a commitment from AOPC, if I could have acknowledged that, you know, that would be definitely beneficial.
Michelle was just sending me a text. I just talked to her on the phone. I just told her that, to get that information to you specifically from, from Adrian.
Because that, well, then I'll share that with the commissioners and then they, you know, can decide.
Are you saying that the maintenance may be covered by the state?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, if you look at the project, the capital cost of the project.
Oh, they put that in and then they?
Correct. The forty-seven, Maya has the forty-seven as a full project.
Oh.
Thirty-two thousand itself is just solely for the X-ray imaging machine.
Correct.
With the five-year warranty and the PMI, that's the fourteen-seven.
Correct. So thirty-two thousand, the twenty thousand will be applied toward the actual capital cost of the equipment.
Oh, so then it's actually, okay, I understand.
But I guess I need, we do need to get clarification. So, you know, the, the quote that I got, it says five-year warranty with the PMI. So it says fourteen thousand, seven hundred, but I understand the five-year warranty. Is that yearly though? Or is that strictly a five-year? Because now I am questioning because it's, it isn't very clear.
I don't, I don't have the answer.
Okay, so that's something we have to check in too because, you know.
Well, Maya, did you already do the work to prepare the bid?
I have not. And the reason why is because everything was tentative. And quite honestly, I didn't want to move forward with something if there was a discussion going to be had that we didn't want to move forward with it based off of not having funding commitment.
Is the, but I assume that the, that the, so it's, it seems like the county's gonna put in about twenty thousand or something.
Give it to Michelle?
Or twenty-five.
Twenty-five. And that's budgeted, right?
Maya's manager is watching, she's watching. I, I will watch.
Hi, Michelle.
But the twenty-five is budgeted, right?
Yes, yeah. The, the full amount was budgeted with twenty thousand dollar supplement. Now, the fifteen, the fourteen, four seventy is the five-year, is the five-year warranty.
So it's, but is that, is that a yearly thing with the PMI? It is a yearly thing. So we're paying it yearly.
So sheriff, this is budget, this was already budgeted in twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
Then why are we having this conversation? Very prudent in the budget.
Court's approved twenty thousand dollars funding from AOPC. I, I was told that by her when she could. I tried to get that money for, when you were funding the Dieter upgrade, we tried to get this money to supplement that for it. AOPC said no. Because we don't have to spend everything in the budget.
I understand that. I understand that. So if it's fifty-fifty, it changes my perspective.
It's actually more than, it's actually more than that if you back up, if you back up the five-year maintenance.
Yeah, you're right. We, we should spend everything. You don't have to. Yeah, okay.
Well, I, I guess we need to give you some direction.
Yes.
And I would say that since there's an opportunity and they've approved the AOPC, that I, I would be inclined to say, let's go ahead with it. I understand your concern, Commissioner Muster. I think maybe there's other places we can possibly try to, to, to do some saving. Because we're not gonna get a grant like this every day of the week.
Well, and I don't know the certain circumstances too. I mean, with all due respect, I kind of would like, you know, Kenny as well. And Kenny's involved, I'm not understanding the, that transition either, so that would help me because I understand Kenny used to manage, I think, Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, the imaging system, correct? And now I think we're gonna, we're gonna have the sheriff do it just for the nature of what his officers are doing upfront. So I just wanna make sure that whatever I'm doing, again, as my position is to do, I just wanna make sure that we're moving out on something.
Right.
That we should be doing too.
Whether it's twenty thousand dollars or forty-seven thousand dollars, my point is this. Is the equipment that we have adding what to do, to job? Is it a Buick? Can we get parts for it, okay? Is it a Buick versus a Cadillac? Does it serve its purpose? Does it detect guns? Does it detect weapons? I mean, if, if, if it's good, if it's good that way, then we'd need to pull on, I was tight.
And that's where respectively, I'd have to, you know, go to the experts in that. That would be both, you know, the sheriff and Kenny because I don't have the answers to that. That I don't know.
How old of a system is it right now? And can we get parts? How old of a system is it?
Oh, I'm gonna say seven.
Seven years?
Seven years, yes.
You can't. Well, your, your input is very important, Sheriff. I, I know, I know, but my input.
You're trying not to say something that would basically compromise.
Exactly, yeah.
Compromise the, the things about the system that the public.
Let's have a meeting.
We, we have, we have some deficiencies that were the reason for the upgrade. And when we saw the opportunity to receive twenty thousand dollars in AOPC funding, we jumped at it because I wasn't going to spack it, but when we found out they would allow that money to be used for this unit, which wasn't originally earmarked for this unit, I said, this makes sense to do this now and do the upgrade because of the need to enhance what we do currently.
Well, cost too. I mean, we know where costs are going as well.
So there's no question.
So I often say, when you go in the courthouse, you don't go in there because you're happy. You go in there because you're told you have to go there, right down to jury duty. Okay? You go there twice, I think, people that are happy and that's for a marriage license, unless they're being pulled into it. And, and the other one is for adoptions. Otherwise, people are just usually angry with a chip on their shoulder when they walk in that building. And there's a lot of weapons out there. And we have, we have a duty to protect the public from the people who work in there to the people who walk in there as innocent victims. We had a guy yesterday threaten to go to an elementary school. We saw what happened there. So, and that's a, an elementary school of all places where you think it'd be the safest place. Not in today's world, as we sold down a year holiday.
So I guess the question is, how much work is it to just put the bid out? We don't have to approve it. And, and I, I don't take that lightly.
No, no, I mean, it's just like anything else. It is part of my job and obviously it's just part of the day-to-day operations. It's just simply a matter of prioritizing and getting it out. The only thing I don't wanna do is move forward with something that, I'm in the middle of, essentially, where I wanna appease, you know, what the department needs to make sure that they have operationally what they need, but I also serve you guys. I wanna make sure that I'm also meeting your wishes and I know there were some concerns over this, so that's why we're kinda having the discussion.
Her taking it out the bid, and that's, that's.
See, we see what the bid is and, and the fact that we're getting it.
No, it's a matter of her putting it out the bid. I have response.
I think, I think, yeah, I think that there's reason to, 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 uh, there's reason to do it, that, that, both for financial and other reasons, we would be prudent to do it.
We have an opportunity to have fifty, fifty percent of the pay.
I have the response, your firm response. We'll get to your writing from Adrian. She just responded. She's nice, happy. I still have a pager. This is DCA stall sheriff. Twenty thousand dollars is approved toward the purchase of the X-ray equipment. As soon as you're able, please email me if approved, invoice, approval payment. I will request reimbursement from AOPC, who has already approved this expense. Thank you, Adrian.
I would move to go out with the bid.
It's not on the agenda. It's an information.
Oh, it's an, yeah, it's an information. Well, we can, we can make a motion even if it's not on the.
I just wanna make sure that I know what I need to do.
It's not necessary to make a motion.
Commissioners, I think what's important is that this discussion identifies the need for all requirements to be analyzed critically, whether they're budgeted and approved for twenty twenty-two or beyond.
Most important is under an informational act, I, I, because the public needs to know about it. It's taxpayer money. Will it be fifty percent or a hundred?
She needs to know if she wants us to continue to, to put the bids out.
Okay.
And, and at this time, I, I'd say no.
Okay.
Now, now, I'm just saying because I need more information.
That's what I'm trying to get to. Okay. All right, we can resume the conversation if you want, but I'm, I'm okay with putting it out.
I'm okay too because I wanna know what the bottom line price tag is. We'll be in a decision.
Yeah, yeah, because actually, I mean, they put it out to bid and find out that it's three times where we thought it was. We'll never know that unless we put it out again.
You have to know numbers before you make a decision.
Well, here's, well, now, if that's, if you're just looking at numbers and you're not truly, then my personal opinion is that we can just get a re-quote and figure out what numbers are. So there's a difference, you know what I mean? So I don't wanna go through a lot of effort if there's no intentions of actually approving it. I can simply, we can work together and get a, a realistic number to awesome what it is based off of the imaging system we want to have, you know, more of a realistic figure, like I said. But if the intention is to truly put out the bid and look at that figure and make a, a formal award, then that's a different process.
I agree a hundred percent.
Maya, if we have the money from AOPC and we don't put it out to bid, I presume we return the money to AOPC?
We would just, well, we would probably not necessarily return it. Knowing what we've done in the past, we would just reallocate it to another project or something. Ideally, we never wanna change projects because it doesn't look good to do that. I mean, I think ideally, when you go to them and you want something, they want you to follow through.
That heading that we were gonna apply towards this.
Right.
So that's what we should apply towards. We shouldn't change the screen.
Like I said, no one, no funding agency likes that, you know, you're changing half, especially a project, you know, a major.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think the director said it best, you know, this is, this is a time to critically look at every little penny we're spending.
This is, this is a time to critically look at every little penny we're spending. And I totally agree. It's, and it's no, I'm, I'm sorry, Sheriff, but tough year for the taxpayers. It's gonna be a tough year for the taxpayers. And if it turns out that we can do it, then, then we do it. But we're in a process, we're in a budget process now. It's one of the most difficult, but it is the most difficult budget process I've ever been in. I've been here eleven years.
All right, so we put out the quote and we vote on it once we get the number.
Okay, I can, we can work to get that done. We can work with Sheriff and his staff and we can certainly get more of a realistic figure because I can't recall.
On the agenda, vote on it.
Yeah, the last time we, when that price quote was done, quite honestly.
I think we actually got two.
We did.
I think we've got two. March of twenty, St. Patrick's Day, March twenty-two. That was the second one. Because we've done it before and we didn't, because they didn't have twenty thousand dollar funding match from AOPC. Then AOPC approved, when we made the request to offset the cost, then they approved the twenty thousand. That doesn't stay in a pot for us. We don't use that money, it doesn't come, it will go back to state. We allocate from our account.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
It's always long, it's always long with you, Sheriff.
Well, we might have a longer one.
You're lucky to have a pager, you know all the answers.
All right, moving on, six point two. Commissioners, discuss the topic of reassessment.
So we have.
Go right into the next one.
Yeah, from the frying pan to the fire. Brooke?
Do you have any comment?
Yes, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Would you like to start it or would you like me to skip first?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just prepared something. The last reassessment was completed in two thousand and four, which has been almost eighteen years ago. And the assessments in the county are getting older and they're out of date. So while the state tax legalization board does not have the authority to force a county to perform a county-wide reassessment, it is generally accepted that when a county falls outside of the fifteen percent of the predetermined ratio, a reassessment should be conducted. If the county does not reassess and the ratio falls to fifteen percent or below, then the state mandates that the common level ratio must be applied to all real estate appeals.
Say that one more time slowly.
If the county does not reassess and the ratio falls to eighty-five percent or below, then the state mandates that the common level ratio must be applied to all real estate appeals.
Now, explain to the public what that means on a practical level. You're fifteen percent below, which we are. So instead of someone getting eighty-five, or eighty-six percent of what it is, what do they get as a, when they appeal?
We are at fifty-six percent right now. If you have a three hundred thousand dollar property and they decide to appeal and we have to apply the common level ratio, instead of paying taxes on three hundred thousand, they're gonna pay taxes on around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Now, let me, let me, let me add to that. Because once you open it up for appeal, then you open yourself for the reassessment, for an assessed value. So we could, as the board, we don't sit on that board, but if, if they felt that that home now, that three hundred thousand dollar home now, and they can justify that it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they can do that.
Yes, that is correct.
Then they apply the common level ratio to discount it. In the past, what we find is that that, that elevated number or that new value is still not as high as the discount that they're going to get. Okay, so let me, let me explain something to you because in, you know, nice homes, expensive homes, it's, it's, it's a major issue. But when you take a look, if, and I'm gonna put you on the spot, okay? I don't mean to, but you're gonna know this better than me. The Lycoming County Mall at one time was probably assessed at about forty million dollars. Forty-four million dollars. They've taken this to appeal a number of times. Now, what is the value, what's the assessed value of the Lycoming County Mall right now?
It's ten or twelve million.
It, now, now, listen to the public, it's ten or twelve million. That difference is made up by higher taxation to the population and to the rest of the businesses. Period. And, and that's just one example, okay? It can happen in a commercial, it can happen in industrial properties and residential properties. And when that happens, there is no option other than to raise the millage, whether it's the county, because we don't have enough money, right? Or the school board, you know, we have one school board. I'm not sure if another one has done this yet. But for example, Muncie takes, they, they look at the common level ratio and they look at the assessed value, and they're appealing it, not the whole Muncie.
They're appealing the sales price.
The sales price, okay? Because now there's concrete evidence that this value is this much. And in most cases, it's, it's a lot. Where somebody might have an assessed value of seventy thousand and they just sold their house for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Okay, what's the value of that? Well, they can take that property and, and have a, have a, an appeal. And they are doing that. They're the only school district that I know that are doing it. But think about the taxpayers of Muncie. Now, the one person that didn't sell their house has the same assessed value of seventy thousand and it's the same exact house that went for sale, but they're both paying different taxes. That's, that's why you need to do reassessments more frequently. Because then it splits that, it, it, it equalizes, it makes people pay the, not the same in taxes, but relative to the neighborhood and the, and the property itself. And that's why you do it. And we are way out of whack.
Well, as you mentioned before about the Lycoming Mall, we have a lot of big box appeals. In the past five years, the county has lost over a hun, half a million in county taxes due to these appeals.
Taxes, not assessed?
Five hundred thousand.
In taxes?
Yes, in county taxes.
That is, you, in the last how many years?
Past five years.
In the past five years, you've lost five hundred thousand of revenue.
And that's per year.
Per year? Oh, is that, is that?
No, 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 that's total, total for the past five years.
But by the fifth year, what are you at? You're, that's your point?
That's my point.
That after the fifth year, you're still gonna be losing revenue?
Annually, you do not collect those taxes. So they have to go up. And they, the real estate tax goes up, the millage goes up because there's no other way of, of the school district or municipality to, to equal that revenue.
Is that just from the big box stores and retail?
That's just the big box stores.
Just the big box stores?
I didn't include residential.
We're collecting five hundred thousand and less from those big box stores than we did. So what's, because some of the public will say, well, quit spending so much money. The, the problem is, look, you can, you can try to be as frugal as you can. If, if you go to work every day and your employer every day takes away a fifth of your paycheck, so over five years, you know, you're making less, you're not gonna be able to pay your bills. And that's, that's what the county's faced with. When you lose five hundred thousand dollars of revenue, our, our increase last year for all the employees' wages was, was about six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I think, you know, that's our loss.
That's your loss, yes.
What about the municipalities and school boards that have a much higher?
I didn't factor those in because of different townships, it's too hard.
That's another point.
Especially the school districts.
Well, that was also only the big box stores, right? You had other appeals from entities other than big box stores, or no?
I've had other appeals, but these are the commercials. I didn't factor any residential properties in the field.
Were there other commercial categories other than big box stores?
No, these, the big boxes falling underneath the retail stores, warehouses.
Okay, they, that was the major loss?
Yes.
And you have entities, especially since COVID, that take a look, and you're, and you're seeing Airbnbs, for example, all over this county. You're seeing licensed places in New York, New Jersey, right? There's a reason for that. They come up here and say, this is cheap. They'll, they'll sit there and pay a half a million dollars for something that was assessed a hundred thousand, right? And, and make money, right? And, you know, what do you do with that? Oh, let's just pass it on to our general population.
Well, it's funny you mention this because there's a property up at McHenry Township, Rails the Trails. This went on the market a couple of days ago. Our assessed valuation of this property with three cabins, a residential house, is three hundred and eighty-five thousand. It's on the market and it's marketed as an Airbnb and went on the market for two point five million. With some contents included and everything, but.
Now, somebody that buys that can afford taxes. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying. Everybody's not in it, and it's, it's terrible. We can't, we cannot find a way to tax other than property tax. From county commissioners to, to the state legislature, it's very difficult. And that's why it's critical to stay up on this. Or you, you get that disparity.
So, so that example you just gave, it's assessed at three hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Yes.
It's on the market for two and a half million.
Yes.
So it's three cabins and how much acreage?
About ten acres.
Ten acres, and, and what was it?
I'm sorry, eighteen point eight zero acres.
Eighteen acres.
Mm-hmm.
So, just so the public understands, the market value is set by a number of factors, one of which is what the income could be, what the comparable sales could be, what the per acre thing of value is. So that's an incredible difference between assessed value and market. Now, we use a fair market system value when we do assessments, right?
We use the sales comparison, income approach, if it's an income property, and the cost approach. There's three different approaches they use when they are doing a reassessment.
Right.
So Brooke, if, if that house were to sell, or that property were to sell for two point three million, right? Would it be assessed at two point three million?
No.
It would not be assessed at two, what would it be assessed at?
Three hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's assessed at already, with the base year of two thousand and four.
That's what they would pay the taxes on?
Yes.
Right, that's what you mean, yeah.
That's exactly what I.
And, and if the school district challenged it?
That's a different story.
Yeah, and said, listen, we don't think that you're properly assessed. What could it possibly be assessed at?
I can't answer that, I'm not the independent board.
Okay.
The board would be the one that would put the bid.
The board would have to look at the appraisals that are brought in by the parties. But if it just sold for two point three million, there's a compelling argument that that's the fair market value, right?
Yes.
Right, I mean, if it sold for two point three, then there's a compelling argument that it should be assessed at two point three. But the point is that the difference in taxes between what one pays on three eighty-five and two point three is made up by everybody else in the county.
And you do have exceptions to the rules where, and we've seen this in Muncie, where somebody's parent is, is very ill and they need help. And, and there's a property real close to them and they'll pay twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars more for that property because of the location. And it's not because it's a better, you know, house, it's just because of the convenience of being there to take care of loved ones. You know, there, there's an exception to the rule. You know, did it, is it really valued that much because they, they paid that much? I, I'd say none, but those are exceptions and you just gotta work it out.
Wow, that wasn't as bad as the X-ray machine.
Do you have, do you have any other numbers?
Sheriff, quit bringing us these difficult.
Do you have any other numbers for us?
Um, let's say if you were to start a reassessment in twenty twenty-three and the notices would go out in twenty twenty-five and we will, the notices would be effective for twenty twenty-six, do you want estimated costs of reassessment?
Yes, and, and the timetable, so that people can understand if.
The timetable, the, whoever you hired to do the reassessment would start in twenty twenty-three. It would run from twenty-four to twenty-six months and the value notices would go out in July of twenty twenty-five with the new values being effective for twenty twenty-six. Right now, I was told the estimated, this is only estimated cost would be between three point five million to three point six million for a reassessment, which we have fifty-four thousand, thirty-five parcels, and you're looking at about sixty-five, sixty-six dollars a parcel.
Fifty-five thousand, how many parcels?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-four thousand, thirty-five.
Fifty-four thousand, thirty-five, and it's about sixty-five a parcel.
Right, and please keep in mind, we've discussed this since twenty sixteen, back in twenty sixteen, the cost of a reassessment was three million. It has gone up and due to the companies I spoke to, that they've had difficulty hiring people too, and they had to adjust their costs with the cost of gas and everything too.
So, and, you know, for me, my, my last question, because it's very difficult to understand.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone can explain it. But you have a reassessment, the, the values come back, and in that year of reassessment, what typically takes place with the new, new adjustment is you cannot raise any more revenue in the year of the reassessment. It has to be revenue neutral.
Correct.
Now, here's where it gets a little computing, Tom, hop out if you can, you know? What happens the following year? Because as, as you have new values, then the millage rate has to go down to meet the revenue. Okay, so if we're at the county, for example, is at six point seven five, six point five mils, then that value up here, that, those millage would have to drop down to meet the same value. But what happens in the following year?
The millage rate could be raised.
Could be raised. And is it typically raised? It is typically raised. So when they, when we talk about that, you know, how much? That's the number, I, I don't know. I, I don't know why we, we can't figure that out.
Well, the year of the reassessment taking effect, I think there's a five percent.
Yeah, it's five.
We connect it.
Right, five percent. When, they don't expect us to hit the exact revenue target. So if, if we have a leeway of about five percent, right?
Yes.
If it ends up resulting in a five percent increase in revenue, we're okay. If it were to increase, if it were to result in a twenty percent increase in revenue, we'd have to lower the millage to get down to the five, right? So, so taxpayers have to understand that our goal here isn't to raise revenue. The goal is to distribute equitably the tax burden so that someone who has a property that they sell for two point three million is not basically reaping the benefit at the expense of someone else because it's assessed at three hundred and eighty-five. It's assessed at, you know, what, a fifth of what it sells or no? A tenth of what it's?
But there's, there's the, the key. It's, that's why the millage has to drop. But those people would still be paying more in taxes than what they did that somebody else is just being paying less.
Well, they would be paying their fair share of taxes. Everyone would pay their fair share based on the, on the building they have. If it's a commercial property, how much income it produces. The mall's, millage, the mall's assessment has gone down because the income has gone down. They are no longer collecting rents from a hundred businesses. They're collecting rents from maybe twenty businesses. So the value, the appraised value of the property, fair market value goes down, right?
Yes.
Because the income stream goes down.
And the, and the only one of the things that I'm concerned about is, and I shouldn't be, but, but it is what it is, is that this was a climate of appreciation hikes that we've never seen before. And that's just throughout the country. I just saw what my, my granddaughter paid for her house, right? That, I thought, oh my God. You know, when you're talking that kind of money and they live on a budget and, and they're not looking at the taxes. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Those taxes could double. And now is it affordable? I don't, I don't know, you know? These are all things that have to be discussed, but, and, and the public needs to understand where it is before you really launch it. But that discussion has to take place. And this is the beginning. And this is the beginning.
Brooke.
When you have nationals that are seventy, eighty thousand dollars that are now selling for two hundred thousand, when you have ranches that are selling between three and four hundred thousand dollars, one person's bonds and maybe a hundred and fifty, their taxes are going to go up.
Wow.
And plus, they've made, many of these people have made improvements during COVID to their homes because they were home, they got stimulus checks, they put it into their homes, and now they're going to get taxed more. We'll open another chapter.
So it's not a popular thing to talk about reassessment, and I think part of it is that the public doesn't really understand reassessment. What are the negative consequences of going eighteen years without doing a reassessment?
Oh, how do I explain that?
Well, we just talked about it.
Well, one is certainly an equity equity issue, right?
Well, you have areas that are booming. Let example, Rails and Trails, you have the cabins out there that are assessed at forty, fifty thousand, they're selling for two hundred, three hundred thousand. You have land, land is at a premium. People, land is in demand. And our assessments on land is based at two thousand and four. One acre, eighteen thousand on a base year of two thousand and four could sell for, depending on where it is, thirty to fifty thousand. So land is in demand too. And then you have some distressed areas where you could see the assessments go down, but developments, developments are booming too. You have builders that are building developments.
So the the point is, though, that the that the tax burden, when it's not equitable, the people who are least able to shoulder it are forced to shoulder it, right? They don't have a choice. When we don't collect the the tax on that two point three million dollar property, the person who just can afford it, the person now who might be living on a fixed income is going to have to pick up the cost of running the prison, running all of county government. So when we create a balance, we create some equity, hopefully that helps people at the lower end of the of the economic strata.
Well, we're looking for uniformity too.
Uniformity.
We want uniformity across the board.
Right.
Muncie School District, with them appealing the sales, Muncie is not uniformity now.
Muncie is what?
It's not uniformity now with them appealing the sales in Muncie.
They're not in uniformity with the other school districts, you're saying?
With anybody in Muncie is what I'm explaining.
Oh, okay. Okay, because they're appealing, that's right. And we went to the meetings down at South Side and.
Cause he sold his home in Muncie, I mean, forget the sale, he purchased a home in Muncie, they take him to court, it's the same house, it's next door.
Right.
He paid two hundred and fifty thousand, mine's assessed next door at seventy.
Right.
He pays a lot more in taxes.
He pays three times the tax rate you pay.
To all three taxing bodies.
Right, to all three taxing.
Yeah, because assessments are not uniform.
Right, so the lack of uniformity in the Constitution is a requirement. You're supposed to have a uniform tax system in the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And that's why they can force a reassessment.
Right, right.
And they have forced reassessments.
But I think only the school district can force the reassessment, right? Can the city?
No, 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 the state.
Any taxing authority.
Oh, any taxing authority can do it, okay. All right, so the lack of uniformity, the land assessments are off the air, okay. Well, that's been very helpful.
Thank you, Brooke.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, recessed the commissioner's public meeting, and it's time for the development block running public hearing. We're convening public hearing.
Christine.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I have started to circulate a sign-in sheet. You can just add your name to it as a record of the attendance. And if the person that is the last person to get it, you just set it in the back and I'll pick it up, that would be very helpful. This this modification hearing is related to an action that was taken, I believe, two weeks ago after the, it was a revision action to the CB, the CDBG CB program. After that action was taken, it came to my attention that that needed to be a modification, which requires a public hearing versus a revision, which does not. So that is the impetus for today's hearing. The modification that is proposed is for, again, the twenty federal fiscal year 2020 CB, which is the coronavirus response CDBG program, and that is to move from the supportive housing program, thirty-six thousand, four hundred, fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents for a new budget of twelve thousand, two hundred, ninety-eight dollars and eleven cents, moving from the American Rescue Workers Rental Mortgage Utilities Assistance, changing that, removing thirty-four thousand, two hundred, sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for a new budget of fourteen thousand, four hundred, eighty-five dollars and ten cents, zeroing out the Feeding Lake Homing County Residents project due to they sent a letter and said that they were not interested in the funding based on the amount of documentation that we need to be able to process those invoices, and moving all of that into the Brook Street Water Main Replacement Program for a new budget for that project of ninety thousand, five hundred dollars and thirty-seven cents. That project is located in Montgomery. So this time, if there is any public comment on this change, there are no public comment, you can leave them.
Okay, thank you. We'll adjourn public hearing at this time, and we'll convene the commissioner's public meeting.
All right, moving on to action items, Christine. Commissioners, seeking your approval on the CDBG, Block CDBG 2020 CB, by the amount of.
Okay, I have motion on that.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Are there any questions for Christine?
No, other than thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. She's, we've got to give her the key to the calendar.
She's getting ready to move on to any decisions.
At some point. But this is just the the action related to the public hearing.
You've done a tremendous job with this program and your duties.
Thank you, I'll be back next week.
Okay. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, eight point two, Maya. Vote to approve, and then can you agree me with Palumbo?
Yes, as a result of the construction being delayed with regards to completion of the Employee Health Center to September seventeenth, we're just extending Palumbo's contract as well to allow for him to have the oversight needed to complete the project.
Okay, and motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We're looking to have this open early in October, correct?
That's correct, we're still on track, and estimated September seventeenth is when they'll reach substantial completion.
Construction will be mid-October, beginning in November.
So it'll be open by early November for for the employees?
Yes, it's due to be opened mid-October to the beginning of November.
Okay, thank you. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
I'm actually doing Nancy's, and if I could, would I be, I'm doing Matt Long's too, so can I add that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. So for Nancy, she wasn't able to make it, but this is just a renewal agreement that we had with Families United Network, there's a no rate increase.
And motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
And if I could, I'm just going to skip down to, what, is it eight point?
Eight point seven.
Eight point seven. For Matt, he wasn't unable to make it, but I just want to let you know that we're going to start seeing more of the Conservation District's grants come before you. It's something that I've been working on with his office. I think it's a great way for him to explain all the good things that he does out there and how it offsets some costs and and helps county residents. So this is one that he has upcoming now, it's their nutrient management and manure management grant application. Again, this is a renewal. They give allocations to counties, in particular, Conservation Districts, and this program helps funding to run Act thirty-eight, the nutrient management side, as well as the Chapter ninety-one manure management programs to ensure the agricultural operations in the county are following proper regulations. This actually offsets personnel costs too, fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars a person's salary out there that helps with this program.
Okay, so I have motion to, actually, eight point seven.
I'll move to approve.
I'm second.
I second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to eight point four, Ken. Approval for agreement with Johnson Control and Fire Protection.
More to Ken.
More to Ken. Before you is a repair for the HVAC system, the smoke detectors in the ductworks were not programmable, they're not transferable, so we need to put the new duct detectors in to be code, that's what this is doing.
Okay, I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Next two items are for Jenny, eight point five and eight point six.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
The first item, eight point five, that I have is a vote to approve the amendment with, the agreement amendment with ATC Group. It's for the Riverwalk Extension. It is a change order for thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for additional design work for the Riverwalk Extension. There's some additional design work near Rich Road, the Levy Section, and Penn College that needs additional engineering work. As part of this contract, we will be entering into a separate MOU with Penn College to pass on some additional costs to them, and that is specifically for the lighting in the coal boxes that they would like for their portion of the trail.
Is this because the scope changed?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We added additional sections beyond our initial grant to incorporate the Rich Road section to extend the trail, and then there were some design challenges. We wanted a little more, they needed a little bit more engineering design. That was different than our original thought for the trail.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, and the second item, item eight point six, is a no-cost, six-month amendment with transitional living centers for their 2019, 2020 Fair Master Leasing Program for Amendment One, and it is to extend the term from August thirteenth, 2022 to February twenty-eighth, 2023, in order for them to spend down the remaining funds and to close out the grant.
Okay, I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, last but not least, eight point eight, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Commissioners, before you for approval is the purchase of a 2022 Caterpillar landfill compactor through Cleveland Brothers Equipment, the amount of one million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is going to be in addition to the fleet, the last one we purchased was in 2015. As you know, we do a twenty-year plan for all of the equipment this was. This is on the 2023 budget. The problem is, is Caterpillar typically makes eighty to ninety compactors a year. They're scoping that down to half of that. We are trying to get this machine on the list and the order for in the factory now so that we can expect delivery sometime next year. This is through Co-Stars, the, on that PO request, you'll see the discounts and everything. This is the main machine that compacts the waste and places it in the important place.
Do I have motion?
Well, I think it must be a misprint that it's in the 2023 budget.
He just said it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make motion and then just.
Great, I have, do I have motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'm second for discussion. I'll second for discussion, go ahead.
Jason, I was going to ask, explain the fact that this is 2023, we're, you're requesting approval for purchases, but we don't pay until delivery.
Correct. We will not see this machine till 2023. And as we we go through capital budgets, we'll be meeting this afternoon, we always give you a couple of years of the capital budget, and you, we do provide you with our twenty-year scope. This money that we would be using for that is already set back for that through the daily tonnage rates.
Let me just ask a question.
We won't be able to get a machine, if we wait till January, February, we probably won't see it till 2024, based on their production schedule, what they're looking to do.
What's the condition of the machine, Jason?
We've already rebuilt both of our compactors.
You said it was a 2015 machine. Commissioner, sorry, ask you the condition of the machine.
It's been rebuilt once, it's tired iron, for sure.
Okay.
We will, we will continue to use it in the number two commissioners, here in the very near future, we will be having two working phases once we open field.
So let me just understand this, though, we haven't approved the 2023 budget yet. So.
Capital, this is a capital.
Right, I understand, it's a capital item.
Five years.
Right, which is a five-year, have we approved a five?
Well, just remember, the reason he's doing this.
It's because he won't have it.
It won't come for another year, so.
It's like we're ordering it now.
Right.
In order to purchase it in 2023.
Right, I get that, but let's say for sake of argument, once we order it, we have to pay for it. You can't order it and not not take delivery. So in essence, we're buying it now.
But but here.
Which I'm okay with. I'm just trying to understand whether we've done the proper, passed the proper hurdles we need to in terms of the allocation of the money. Because we don't, I don't know that, we do approve a five-year capital budget.
Yes, we do, yeah.
So so we have approved, okay, so we've done all the approving we need to do.
And it's a, it's, what is that, a seven, it's seven years, and it's been rebuilt. And so, and I'm glad you mentioned that because the commissioners went over to see some of the equipment, when you're talking about the metal.
Right.
Okay, it's the aged metal. Well, it wears, metal wears. So the parts that he has to order are not made for the wear, they're made for the original, which is now loose, and it's, and it doesn't work, okay? You can modify that, but you're not, the life of the new parts won't last as long, not even close, because of of what happens in that environment.
Right. So, okay, so you're getting a jump on it to ensure that we have it timely.
Yes.
And that we also don't get shut out by supply chain issues.
We do have the funds already setting in our capital fund.
Right, and we've approved those funds, okay.
Okay, makes sense. All right, so we have motion and a second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. You know, this is what we typically look at in one point two, and one up to one point five seven, who waits on next year where.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to Commissioner Conant.
I'm just going to reiterate some of the things that we said today as far as budgets, allocating the ARPA funds and whatnot. I enjoy being a commissioner. I mean, it's, it's stressful, but we affect a lot of people's lives. And when when we're allocating ARPA funds or Act thirteen funds, we just don't look at it from a county's perspective. I'll give you a good example with with the ARPA funds and the, and I think we changed it to a five million dollar allocation to sewer and water projects. And some seem more important than others, especially with Jersey Shore and Williamsport, but then you hear stories of of municipalities not wanting to raise water rates or sewage rates because they're at a higher tax level, like Williamsport, for example. Mike did a great job in explaining why he would like to see money come out.
You're talking about Mike Miller from the Williamsport.
And and all of these people, both Eric's, all of them, worked very hard for for the people of this community to cut those costs as much as they can. But here's an example of the enormous amount of information that we need to 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 process to make a good determination. Here, we're looking at a water, we're working, looking at a water authority that loses sixty-eight percent of its water. They pay to treat one hundred percent of the water, but because the system's so worn, sixty-eight percent of that water leaks out into the earth. So think about that. You know, how do you make a decision on who to who to allocate the funds to? Because if they had the money to repair that, those rates could actually drop, right? Because if they had the money to repair that, those rates could actually drop, right? So that's, I, I just wanted to throw that out. There's a lot of different things, a lot of different factors that we look at in this process and that was one that was an eye-opener to me yesterday.
Yesterday was an eye-opener. Want to remind everyone of the nine eleven riot on Sunday. Either you can participate or at least be along the route and remember the fallen and just honor that day, remember each, each family and how our nation was changed forever. Anybody else? Come on.
Come on in, how are you? Tom Adams, Williamsport. Well, one thing I like to say, I kind of liked going to the county courthouse. They call for jury duty and never get picked. But it's kind of neat to see different people and see the guards and stuff. I'm a little embarrassed with, so I'll tell you the truth, a little embarrassed with our petitions that they weren't, how they should have been. Because when I was thinking about it a couple of times, I thought, how is it going to be verified, you know? Because, you know, you have the proper structure for petition. I appreciate that that was brought up for the, you know, the petition drive that we have for the machine. But also though, but I think regardless of that, I think in the code, I think if, the way I understand it, I think Karen was saying is that if, if the petitions, let's say, put it this way, if, if the county Commissioners don't act, you know, do, do something like that, you know, put that provision on the ballot, then people can go to, go to a petition. So that's, I think, perhaps how she was looking at it. So I think we can understand in that, that we still have that ability to put it on without a petition. That's, that was the idea. So if the petition wasn't proper, so that didn't matter once it got through the vote. Anyway, so I guess the other thing I was thinking of, the one fellow that was here that called us all kind of crazy, you know, he said him overwrote Republicans is what happened to Vietnam. I kind of disagree with him on, on the part that Republicans are responsible for sending people to Saigon and anyway, that was, of course, years ago and nobody alive today was responsible for that. But we know there's a lot of bad players behind the scenes in our government, you know, especially federal level. And a lot of people that are pushing to get us actually to, to take this nation down, make it part of a world government. That's what I think is part of the whole vaccine thing with the code and stuff. It's, I mean, you see a lot of evidence, the birth rates are dropping since those vaccines have come out, death rates are going up and sterilization rates are going up. One of the countries, I can't think of the name of which one it was, had an eighty percent, you know, where the population, eighty percent of the population took the vaccines and nine months to the day, you know, to that, after that, the birth rate started dropping, you know, eight and a half percent, and it continued to drop. So I think it's actually a depopulation program, sterilization, so, which really, when historians and people understand the value of human life, that's how we progress, that's how things get better. The more people you have, the more industry you need, and the more people work, it helps produce and, and you get innovation. And once it, and those doors are locked to innovation, it's when things are locked down and, and you don't have the amount of people available to do what's necessary, life starts going backward. And I think we're, we're entering real dangerous times where innovation only be for certain, select few, and we'll be able to afford those kinds of things. Could we see prices constantly going up and being able to afford just things like in county government? That's going to start going away, I think, and we're going to start going back to, you know, darker times if we can't get some of this stuff corrected. And a lot has, but I think we're just being attacked on all different sides. This has really been planned out well. Anyway, well, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Not sure what it means, but Ben Vae comment is M-E-D-L-N-K.
Oh, it's just a comment?
N-E-L-N-K?
M space E O space L-N-K.
We have completed our agenda, so our meeting will be adjourned. Our next meeting will be September fifteenth here at this room. Thank you.
Kristin, here is that sign-in sheet.
Okay, thank you, your sign-in sheet. How are you?
Good.
Good.